Okay, it actually might be easier if I do it because I'll have to share my slides anyway. Tracy, I think we're okay with getting started now. I have us at 5:31. And just wanted to let folks know if you were tuning on early that music was from the Camas High School Choir. They've done some recordings and Mr. Chesson shared that with me this week. And I thought it would be a good way to welcome people to the meeting. So there's a link if you look in the board docs, you can go and find that music and other music from our students. So pretty awesome.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Okay, everyone, welcome to our February 8th board meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and we will start with "The Pledge of Allegiance" by Mr. Doug Quinn. Doug, you're on mute.
On mute. There we go. Thanks. Sorry about that. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you, Doug. Next, we will do our land acknowledgement by Ms. Connie Hennessy.
Thank you. I acknowledge that the geographical region of Camas is located on the ancestral and territorial lands of the Chinook and Kowals people and that the Chinook are still fighting to be a federally recognized tribe on their own land.
Thank you for that, Connie. Next, we will move on to item C, which is Black History Month. I believe Jeff has something for that.
Yeah, we've got a couple of slides here that I'm going to move forward to. And February is Black History Month and I want Dr. Williams to talk a little about these photos here. I think many of you probably are familiar with Amanda Gorman and you may know Grace. So Dr. Williams, want to tell us about these photos?
Yes, there were a lot of big things happening the first of this year, as you know, one, starting with the inauguration and listening to Amanda Gorman's just powerful delivery and words. And we also started Black History Month with our sixth graders going back to school. So you are looking at Grace Harris, a sixth grader at Skyridge, who wanted to celebrate going back to school and Black History Month and just all the things. And so you just sit here and just take this photo in and how she's basically mirroring Amanda Gorman's headgear. So her beautiful headband. And Grace is quite an artist. So she's even designed the shoes that she's wearing and has created a website that she actually trained Skyridge staff on with respect to diversity and inclusion. And so our students are just quite remarkable. And it's not lost on us, just kind of the power just in looking at this moment and what it represents and how powerful something such as representation is. And so Jeff, if you'll go to that next slide, so why Black History Month? So if that first slide didn't get you, here's a few other things to just remind us that, number one, representation matters. One thing we are still working to do as a district and we've come some distance, but we still have quite a ways to go, is to reflect the beautiful diversity of our students and families. And that's just truly what's in this country and in this nation, in our practices and our curriculum, in our spaces, in the ways in which we communicate, in the ways in which we welcome families from different backgrounds. Specifically for this month, we're talking about Black History in particular. Then for number two, it says, "Black History is American history." Just that consistent reminder. It isn't just something we pause to do, stop everything. It's Black History Month. Let's talk about Black people. But you know, how can we continue to infuse Black History throughout our year so that it's just ingrained in our practices? And again, this is the direction that we are trying to head in as a system. Number three, we just talked about honoring the live stories and experience of Black people beyond surface celebrations. So in some of our initial trainings around culturally responsive teaching, specifically in Zaretta Hammond's book, she talks about this idea of the culture tree and that, you know, holidays and celebrations are at the beginning. Siri's talking to me. But holidays and celebrations are at the beginning level of honoring what something like Black History Month is about and how do we go deeper? And we do that by number four, going and helping our students and families understand the current social and political context. Why does Black History matter? It really informs what we are experiencing today. And you'll see that arrow to the right pointing at that first Families book. We had the pleasure, Admin from Camas High School and myself met with the NAACP to talk about curriculum opportunities that emphasize what's happening locally with respect to Black History. So here, this book describes some of the first African-American families in the Clark County area so that we make Black History local, we make it relevant so that it remains connected to who we are and what we do. And then that fifth piece, you know, I had the privilege of doing a workshop with Lisa Aggressive. And one of the key items that we need to remember in all of this work as we really try to dig and be until transparent history and truth is that we need to increase our own personal growth and stamina in this work. And stamina is a key word, especially through the, given the year we've had in 2020 and how far we still need to go. But we believe we can create that beloved community and nation by continuing to prioritize these celebrations and acknowledgements. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, for that. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number four, the Milltown Pride Awards. And I believe we are recognizing the Transportation Department today.
We are, Tracy. Sorry, it's taking a while to load tonight as I navigate through these slides and trying to make sure that we're getting our closed captioning going too by being in presenting mode. And so it's a little clunky, but yeah, for those that are first timers to our board meeting, we have a special part of the agenda where we really try to recognize our history, as Dr. Williams just talked about, and some of the attributes of who we were, who we are and who we hope to be. And you know, this year, you know, obviously it's been challenging, but our transportation team has really been in the crosshairs, I guess, of all this. Number one, when we're fully remote, obviously you can't drive a bus remote, right? Like it's, and so those services weren't needed as much and we had to furlough staff and that was really difficult. And these are amazing people that work hard every day to serve our students. And then as we've added more and more people to being in-person services, our students, the routes aren't like typical. Like we have a pretty intricate system of getting all our elementary kids in, all our middle school kids and our secondary or high school kids in in a normal year, but this is anything but normal. And so this team here has been pretty phenomenal in just responding to, hey, we would like to bring these three kids in at this school during these hours. And they're like, okay, let's figure out how we can do that. And the leadership of the team has been great in the coordination of the schedules. And then each of the drivers have been outstanding in learning new routes and trying to figure out, okay, where am I going today? Because each day is very atypical. And then the mechanics and service people to keep these buses going. If they're not running regularly, the crew has had to provide maintenance throughout and get buses started up and fired up and make sure everything's working. And so we just wanted to acknowledge our transportation team. And then, of course, you add on to it that a half dozen of these people are out driving the roads at 4:30 in the morning, trying to assess if there's snow and ice and if we need to do anything with that. So it's a pretty amazing crew and we want to get Milltown Prides to each of them. And this collective picture really represents who they are, really heart and soul of what we do in Camas.
Thank you, Jeff. That is a great picture. And you're right, we couldn't do without the Transportation Department. I know they've been working hard too, just like everyone else. So we appreciate them and all that they've been doing. With that, we will move on to item five, Board Communication. And I think we're first going to start off with some recognition for some longtime board members that we have here.
Yeah, we've hit the 15-year mark for two of our board members, Mr. Quinn and Ms. Hennessy. 15 years of serving this community through the joys of handing out diplomas on graduation nights to the challenges, you know, that we've been facing recently. Being a board member is pretty, you have to be a really humble person to do it. I've seen how much time this board puts into it and the care and the concern they have. And just Connie and Doug, you've set the bar really high. I know Cory and Tracy and Erica look up to you and you're a model. And we just really appreciate you. And so I don't know, Tracy, if you have any other remarks? And then if Connie and Doug have any remarks?
I just want to personally thank Doug and Connie for your leadership these last two years. I've been on the board for four years and I remember getting on the board and it was you guys and Casey Odell and Julie Rothson. I looked like this newbie. And I loved having that you guys have so much knowledge and background and history and were so supportive to me as a new member, new board member four years ago. And now we have Cory and Erica following along too. So you definitely are, we love having you guys on the board and thank you for your leadership and I appreciate that.
Can I just say I'd like to thank Cory for posing for this certificate that we will have framed for both of you. So, hey, thank you, Connie and Doug. I appreciate you. I appreciate your leadership, your thoughtfulness, your guidance and your thoughts that you have given to all of us and your time that you've given to all of us. And so thank you for your humor and your humility and your thoughtfulness for all of our families.
Yeah, there's not much more that I could add to that either. The two of you, it's amazing to think of how much you've given to our community and our district over the years. I know that, you know, as one of the newbies on the board, I've really looked up to you and really got a lot of guidance from you. And there's really, you know, it's a volunteer position. It's not a political position, but in a lot of ways, I think statesman comes to mind when I think of, when I think of both of you. You're just, you're true professionals and great examples and a great face for our district. And just thank you for everything you've done and will continue to do.
I don't know if Doug or Connie want to share anything? Or if anyone else wants to give any more board communication?
I'll say a little something. I was hoping Doug would go first, but the silence gets awkward. I just wanted to thank everybody else. I mean, we are a board together, right? We all bring something different to the table and together with all of those different pieces is the strength of what we are able to move forward with and to, you know, do the best we can for the district and our kids. And I just, it's an honor to be able to have been in this position for this long. It's never boring and it's, you know, it's so dynamic that, you know, I don't know if you ever get to feel like a veteran because everything changes every day. But thank you to all you and to the staff and cabinet and Jeff for just making it, making our job easier or less difficult. And so thank you all. I'm humbled to be here.
I will share that I absolutely love our group as a board. You guys are all amazing and it's been fun. And I think that to me, if we can continue to do good business, stay focused and serve our community well and have fun at it, that's wonderful. And I hope that the next pandemic that comes around, we're together because I feel like we can manage that with a little history under our belt would be, that would be nice. The administrative team, boy, what a bunch of horsepower being brought to bear to serve the needs of our community and our students. And that feels good to me that we are where we're at. I know it's hard and I know it's going to continue to provide challenges, but it's fun in the regards of we have paths, we have places, we have goals, we're staying on point. And the ability for us as a group of five to not waste our time on pettiness or other interpersonal sensitivities and be able to work well and get work done and serve the community is really a wonderful compliment to the capacity you three and Connie all bring to bear. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, Doug and Connie. And Doug, I hope we don't ever have another pandemic. So, but you're right, we're making our way through it now. So next, we do have board communications. I don't know if any of you want to share what's been going on. I can call on you and then it will be a surprise if you're just ready to talk. And so I guess I'm going to start with Erica.
I'm saying, don't call on people. Thanks, Tracy. Well, fellow board members, this, the last couple of weeks, I just want to give you an update that I have been able to meet with six different educators, talked with a few neighbors, attended a CHS Town Hall and a Citizens Advisory Committee and received a few emails from parents. So every discussion this week, it seemed in the last two weeks was varied. I wish I could tell you there was a theme, but it was all vastly different. You know, and I just, I welcome and I appreciate the opportunity to listen, to hear individuals' thoughts of what's going on in their situation. Like I said, they were all different, which, you know, brings up very good opportunities to understand that as varied as we all are, are the students in our district, are the families that are contacting us, are the teachers that teach us. So I have appreciated those opportunities. It looks like we will be doing some more in the next couple of weeks and I look forward to it.
Thank you, Erica. How about Cory? Do you have an update for us tonight?
I'd say the only thing that I would add to that, I was kind of tagging along with Erica on a few of those things, is on Friday, I got a chance along with Connie and Tracy to meet with Mr. Mohler at Liberty as well as Mr. Berenowski and get a firsthand account of the process for welcoming our small groups of students into Liberty Middle School. It was very eye-opening to be able to actually be there in person instead of hearing about, instead of hearing, you know, secondhand how things are going to actually get in there. And I really appreciated quite literally walking us through the process of getting off the bus and the screenings. And this is how you check in and this is how we walk to class and this is how the classrooms are set up. Being able to peek in without, you know, trying, without disrupting the learning that was going on. I think it was day four when we were, when we were there. But it was, it was, it was very great. It was very reassuring to see all of the safety measures that are in place to hear about how this incremental increase that we've been doing in in-person learning has allowed for testing of systems and for any sort of adjustments and modifications along the way. It's great to hear, you know, Mr. Mohler and Mr. Berenowski were talking about, you know, collaborating with and getting advice from other buildings in our district. So it's great to hear that all of our administration is on the same page with that. So I know that it was, it was very informative and I hope that we're able to get in and see some other buildings as well because it really, it put me at ease a little bit more with what we're doing.
Sorry, I was muted that time. Doug, are you ready to have your update?
Sure, absolutely. Also, I think I saw you guys on that CHS Town Hall. I want to say congratulations, Mr. Morris, Ms. Potassie and Mr. Fox. You know, I was a wonderful presentation. I was proud of the organization and the structure that they put forth. I hope the follow-up from parents was good and that they were able to, you know, bring the ring of knowledge present to students and parents that are beginning to consider getting back into the swing of in-person small group. Went out and waved some signs and I know several of you have done that over the last couple of weeks. That was, that was fun. I didn't get the best weather, unfortunately. Did a couple two-by-ones this week, so it feels like the information's coming forward and the details about what we're doing as a district and planning forward, that's all there. Last night, I decided to sit in on the Port of Camas Washougal Waterfront Proposal. Very interesting meeting. Lots of good information on how they are going to change that waterfront and that access. Leaves me to hope that someday, maybe there'll be some outdoor educational opportunities down there, but maybe Columbia Springs is the better place for that. We did a Capital Projects meeting. We talked about Garber Theater, which is, you should be, if you haven't already been contacted about a potential tour to seize the building. To see the advancement since our last tour. The two turf fields up at the high school complex are now done. You see the request for final acceptance on tonight's agenda. So that's pretty cool. And the field house is very soon, if not already, about done and ready to have turf placed to its insides. So it'll be wrapped up here very quickly, probably, I think it was about, Tracy, it was in April, I think, is what they'd say, around the first of April, it should be coming to do a wrap. And then I've spent this last week in multiple conversations, also in teacher groups and parents who've reached out with various email and phone conversations, talking about return to school items and curriculum issues primarily is what I've been hearing about.
Thank you for that update. And Connie, I know you're feeling under the weather tonight, but do you have an update for us?
I don't really have much to add other than, you know, I've done the phone calls with staff, which I've really enjoyed hearing, communicating with parents and friends and neighbors about school openings and the levy. And just wanted to reiterate, when we did our visit to Liberty, just the complexity of the system that it takes to bring kids back and staff back safely. It's a giant puzzle with many moving parts and the planning that has gone into that is pretty incredible. And so kudos to all the administrative staffs in schools that are bringing students back in small groups at this point. We understand that it's no small feat and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Connie. And of course, by the time you get to me, I just say ditto because I've been doing all the same thing you guys have been doing. The staff conversations have been well. I think what's a great thing about this group is that we all interact with different people and we all have different neighbors. We all have kids in different grades. We all have different parents that call us. And so I think we get a good feel for the community because we have our fingers all over the place, right? So I just want to make sure that we are hearing people. We're out there. We're listening to people. And so I appreciate that. The staff conversations have been good. And I go on the tour of Liberty, that was, it was amazing. And I'm excited to have the kids going back there. And one of the complexities that Gary talked about was that, for instance, now I believe they're having six lunches because they have to have that many lunches in order to maintain the social distance and have the kids use the lunchroom and the way the tables are. So the complexity of getting all these kids back in school and the amount of work that goes into this is unbelievable. So I don't want it to go unnoticed all the hard work that's happening for that to happen. And we are very excited that we're getting some kids back and more kids going back next week as well, including my eighth grader. So we're excited about that. If we don't have anything else, we will move on to item six, which is the public comments. And I believe Jeff is going to read them. I think there's three of them and he'll read them for us tonight.
I will, Tracy. The first is from Brandy Heard. "Good evening, school board members. I wanted to say thank you to whoever was responsible for adding the school board meeting information to the front page of the district's website. I had emailed my public comment for the December 14th meeting requesting the links and information to be better accessible. Thank you for acting and making these meetings easily accessible for our community. It is greatly appreciated. Thank you, Brandy." The next comment is from staff member Kelly Green. "As a teacher in the K-2 band, I am feeling taken advantage of by the school board and district. We were forced back in unvaccinated and many of us, like myself, have underlying health conditions and are not in a financial position to take unpaid leave. School does not look like normal in our classrooms. This is challenging emotionally and physically for teachers. We have to be hyper vigilant about around the kids wearing masks and staying distant. We are snacking and drinking water in the classrooms. I still haven't seen all of this extra cleaning the community is being told is happening. An administrator in central office is telling high school teachers that the elementary teachers are all on board with having to teach to the students at home while focusing on the kids literally in the room with us. This is an inaccurate and unfair generalization. Many of us do not feel this is appropriate and it is adding added stress, anxiety and pressure to be all things to all people all the time." and it is adding, adding added stress, anxiety, and pressure to be all things to all people all the time. What happened to seeing and serving the students in front of us? One size does not fit all. Now we are hearing that hybrid is coming and with little warning and no time to plan. The students will stay an extra hour on Thursday of this week. Can nothing be made simpler for teachers? I am so beyond frustrated, anxious, depressed, and worn out by the 70-plus hours a week I am working, the misinformation, and the lack of concern for our physical and mental health that I no longer know who to ask for help. Clearly, no one in the district is listening. The third comment is from staff member Kathy Sherrill. My name is Kathy Catherine Sherrill. I teach kindergarten at Fox and have been back in person with students since November. My classroom capacity is for social distancing with 10 students in Cohort A and 11 students in Cohort B. It is surprised to me, surprised to me that even a possibility that we could be asked to have a full class, 21 students, in my case, in person for full, four full days a week by March 1st. When I heard this, I was alarmed and honestly unprepared for this possibility. Reopening plans need to be adjusted and hybrid needs to continue with two cohorts. I do not feel safe in a classroom with 21 students in a full school. Small group hybrid cohorts need to remain in place until all teachers are vaccinated. Sincerely, Kathy Sherrill. And those are the public comments from this evening.
Thank you, Jeff, for reading those. And they also are, you can read them online in the board docs also if we wanted to see them again. Thank you for those who submitted public comments. Um, next on item seven, did everyone see the items added to the consent agenda? I'm seeing head nods, except from Connie, but I'm sure she is too. Uh, so if you, I'll take a, entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, Cory. Uh, any discussion? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Cory?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
Connie?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that passes unanimously. And we will next move on to item nine with some discussion and presentations on our reopening plan.
Thanks, Tracy. Again, just pause, we're also had reload here.
We need some of that music playing again here.
I know. If I was that good though, to have all those going, then I'd probably be a kindergarten teacher because they're balancing all those things. So just so you know, these are all referenced in our agenda and linked. And so if you're an audience member and you're really interested in elementary update, then you can go to that part of the presentation. But we will walk through a few items tonight, including the timeline, countermeasures, Canvas Connect Academy update, elementary update, and secondary update. So first regarding the timeline, as you guys know, I always try to show these slides that are the guiding principles used to try to navigate this year and then also the decision-making rationale. And so more for reference as, as we've really looked at these every board meeting since August. Also some definitions and I'm so, uh, it's nice to hear you guys in your board communication using all these terms really accurately. These are all new terms for us, right? Small groups, groups versus hybrid, in-person versus full-time. And we've defined these as part of the reopening plan and, and currently have been executing the small group phase of the plan. Vaccinations is something that you heard a couple of times in the public comments. And um, still the supply is the biggest challenge for us as we move through our state's priority list. Um, and we're not quite to the level of school staff in that prioritization. So as a region, we have identified staff to support a process. Uh, so that would include our, our nursing team, logistics kinds of support, administrative assistance. And so we have created almost like an emergency phone tree with all the districts contributing so that if there is an ability to have a mobile site at one of our schools and Camas High School is being considered for that, that we're ready to deploy and that we're not dependent on other staff to come in and do that for us. Really, the only thing that we would be missing is the vaccine. And so Superintendent Tim Merlino from ESD 112 meets daily with the regional response team. Uh, and then I meet weekly on a vaccination task force. We've also been meeting with healthcare providers, Legacy, Kaiser, Salmon Creek, all, all these different entities to try to understand how we can help when the supply becomes available to get not only our staff vaccinated, but how can we help our community be vaccinated? And so um, the big thing there is supply and it will be the, the, the challenge as we head forward. And, but hopefully we're, we're making progress, right? Every, every week we're getting more people vaccinated. Another ongoing part of what we share with you in our board meetings is research. There are supposed to be CDC updates released this week. I'm not sure on the timeline of that, but there were several news organizations reporting on that last week. And so stay tuned if there's any changes. Of course, CDC and the Department of Health for our state, uh, there's like an ebb and flow of that. So whether the Washington State Department of Health does something different remains to be seen, but um, we're, we're paying attention to both of those. And then I've been asked, uh, this has come up several times about just testing. And there was an article in the Seattle Times today about rapid testing, um, just as a, a baseline and really trying to analyze what's happening in a school system. And so three districts were a part of an initial pilot. Um, and then 55 districts have applied for consideration for ongoing and we're one of those districts. We're, we're queued up. I don't, I don't know what that means for us or what the resources are available, but we're definitely trying to take advantage of that. Um, in this article from the Seattle Times, they, they only cited really one preliminary finding and that was that, um, as they were doing these screening tests, that so far only 0.2% of those tested were infected. And um, and some of the previous research that the Department of Health anchored their recommendations around was some of the modeling out of the Institute for Disease Modeling up in the Seattle area. And what they found is that because of the mitigation strategies in schools, that this ongoing kind of rapid testing wasn't necessarily changing rates in, in schools and community. And so that, that's, that study is cited in our research document as well, but probably more to come on that. And, and if we're uh, lucky enough to be a part of that program, then certainly I'll give you more information about that as we move forward. We really want to take advantage of every opportunity there is, if it means getting students and staff back on campus safely. Um, just an update, we continue to show this slide in February now with the addition of our third grade, our third and sixth grade last week, that we're just roughly about 45% of our district is having some sort of in-person experience at some point during the week. Um, so we continue to expand on that. And then this is a slide that we've talked about as well, that's just drawing from the Department of Health guidance about when should we be transitioning? And then this is the guidance that we've talked about and I've, I've bolded the, the moderate because that's the level that we're currently in. Um, for most of the school year, we've been in the high COVID activity level unfortunately. And, and so we've been using the structures there to increase in-person through small groups. But moderate does open the door to other opportunities, which we'll talk a little more about. So right now, um, our, our current identified rate is 310.54, which is, is in the moderate range. In my Clark County Public Health update on this afternoon, uh, they anticipate the rate that will be released tomorrow is 262. So that's great news. And we continue to level out. Um, and that trend, uh, over the weekend, the, the case numbers were some of the lowest that they've been since October. Um, so really, really positive news. And then our COVID dashboard, this is the screenshot from today. Um, still to date, we've had only one outbreak. Um, and again, an outbreak is any kind of time a transmission is linked to have happened at a school site. So it's, it's really a, a one-to-one kind of transmission there. This is our, the, the timeline that you guys adopted if we remain in high COVID activity level. And I've graded out the ones that have already been implemented. And so we're queued up for fourth, fifth, seventh, and eighth in small groups on February 16th, um, if we were to stay in the high, the high COVID level. But obviously I, I just told you we're not in the high COVID level. Um, I also wanted to, um, one, this was asked of us is what, what are other districts doing in relationship to their reopening plans? And so I just pulled Evergreen, Vancouver, and Washougal's plans. Um, the sources are linked here. The Evergreen and Vancouver plans, the source is the Colombian articles about them last week. And Washougal's information is coming directly from their website. And so at the elementary level, we're all about the same. We are um, doing small groups and phasing those in, um, transitioning to hybrid if we get to moderate levels. But there isn't a whole lot of difference between the districts other than which grade levels and when they started. But we're all kind of marching in the same direction there. Um, the, a big difference is that at the middle school and high school level, we are the only district that has a timeline of, for small groups and high COVID activity level. And so the dates on there are listed, um, but you'll notice that the other districts are, when it gets to moderate is when they'll transition. And right now, because our moderate level is still above the 200 range that the Department of Health calls out for high school transition, there aren't plans to do any um, high school onsite other than, um, you know, very intentional small groups, not grade-level bans like we, um, you have adopted for March 1st. Another comparison is just looking at the state. And so the state over the last four weeks has been collecting data and they have an interactive map that you can go to and look at what's happening across the state. And so they break it into elementary, middle, high school, and then overall. And um, one of the things, uh, it's, it's a little difficult to complete the data because what they ask in this percent in-person single day is for you to take a typical day. There's really not a typical day anymore. Um, and so what we've done is kind of look at a Monday, Tuesday, or a Thursday, Friday, because our Wednesdays, um, we are not serving as many students in person. And so it's hard to know how other districts are counting that as well. Um, the other indicator is percent in-person weekly. And so that's, that's a little more straightforward. If a kid was served in person at any time in the week, you can count them. And so I just wanted to layer on where we're at as a district so that you have kind of a baseline. You saw where we were at in, with our neighbor districts. Well, where are we at in, um, in the state? And so when you look at this, so percent in-person single day, you can see that our, our numbers of students that are being served are a little higher in the elementary level and middle school level, a little lower at the high school level and a little higher overall. When you look at the um, in-person weekly, we're significantly higher at the elementary level, at the middle school level, higher at the high school level, um, and then overall. And so, um, you know, just as a barometer, there isn't, uh, as somebody, I think maybe Connie said that there isn't necessarily one clear, correct pathway. But this just gives you a baseline for how are we compared to other districts across the state. So I think I'm, I'm gonna pause there before I get into others because sometimes I get going really quickly on all this and I want to make sure if there are any questions that I can address those.
Well, it is hard to compare apples to apples, but this is great information to see how we do compare to others in, in our local community and in the state. So um, I, I appreciate that. You put those slides together.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit now then about what happens in moderate. Back in December, uh, when you guys were trying to update the plan, um, did our best to really anticipate what might happen. And you know, as, as we've all experienced, you know, that weekly report of what the rate is can really fluctuate. And so it's hard to make plans and, and know what it's gonna look like one or two weeks from now. And so I think that goes back to some of the public comments that we heard about transitions and time. And um, you know, I, I've certainly heard from some stakeholders that you've had nine months to plan for this, right? Why wouldn't you know all of this already? And then on the other side, it's just the nuances of what's happening make it very unique. So I think there's validity on both sides of that argument. If we look at what we're, so last week when we were in moderate, um, I, I shared with you guys, okay, we're in moderate. What could happen in the second week? And if we were to come back to high tomorrow, basically we just continue with our, our plan of deploying students in that high-level activity, which is, I, I really like that part of our plan because it does provide some certainty for people to know what to expect. We're not gonna be in high tomorrow based on what Clark County Public Health told me today. And so our timeline really looks like this where, um, we've already had K-1, 2, 3 in, in school and the model in the small group is um, basically to about 1:30, depending on which elementary school you're at. And so if we were to move to hybrid, it's actually gonna move those grade levels to a full day. And so what we had adopted previously was that, um, that transition would happen for grades that were already in person on the following Thursday of that, of that week that you get the second um, moderate rating. And you also adopted a kind of some room there with a 375 indicator so that if it went over, just a little bit over moderate, that we'd still be able to move forward with our plans. So next week, as we transition, well, I guess on, on Thursday would be that first point of, of change based on moderate levels. And so instead of staying in small groups, um, on Thursday, Cohort B would actually go another hour of school um, and start the hybrid model. Um, then the following week, we'd be adding fourth and fifth grade to that equation. And instead of them starting in small groups, which is really problematic to have two different schedules happening on the same campus, they would move into hybrid as well. So the big difference there is that instead of going to 1:30, those students would be going to 2:30. And um, like I said, Lackamas has a, just a little different schedule on that. The, the sixth grade is already in person as well, but seventh and eighth haven't. And our middle schools, as you guys talked about, this last week was the very first week that they've had students in. And so um, the thought is that next week we would still stay in small groups for our middle school um, and allow those seventh and eighth graders an opportunity to come in and orient with the building and the expectations. And then the following week, um, we would all be in hybrid K-8. Now, the, the, the week of March 1st, um, there are some other notes here because once, um, we get into March 1st, the rates for high school are different than the rates for K-8 and they talk about 200, um, so approaching 200. So if we were down and we were continuing to do great with our rates as a community, it might make more sense for us to talk about just going to hybrid as opposed to going to small groups at the high school level. And our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students would also be in hybrid. The other note here is that in our original reopening plan is that once we get all of our K-5 students into a hybrid model, and if those rates stay in the moderate level, then we'd be talking about increasing days for elementary students as well. And the barrier here is the six-foot distance that we need to make sure that we're not going over the capacity that we've established for classrooms. Um, if we are, we need to be creative about where are those students going to be? But the goal would be to add days in the moderate level. And a maximum would be the four days, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesday would continue to be a remote day. We're still gonna have students that are served remotely. We're gonna have students and staff that are quarantined, that are gonna need remote services or isolated. And so um, the, the final kind of transition would be when we moved into the, the low stage of high, low COVID risk activity, where we'd be talking about a return to all-in-person and some sort of fashion like we used to be. So there's a lot to this slide. And, and again, I want to pause on this one just to make sure, um, the board, you know, we talk about it each week, but then the rates change and the circumstances are different. I want to make sure that there aren't any questions or concerns about this.
Jeff, I did have one question. Um, oh, it was alluded to in the public comment tonight and it's something that I've heard in some of my one-on-one discussions as well with, with other staff members. That, um, that in-person, uh, where we're talking about March 1st, uh, in-person for K-5, that's full class sizes?
So that, yeah, that's where we would have to work through those capacity issues and-
Yeah, because we had been, we had been talking about since the beginning of the year that we had done kind of these like audits of the different elementary rooms to see what capacity is. But then I'm hearing that, and we were saying that most of our classes, we were feeling okay about six-foot distancing in there. And, and now I'm hearing, I'm starting to hear in the last couple of weeks, maybe that's not the case. Do we need to? Is, is there furniture that needs to be reconfigured? Have our class sizes changed? I'm just kind of interested to hear a little more about that.
Yes, on both of those, like, um, so class sizes might have shifted. People who want to be in remote only versus in-person could shift. And we, we have established capacities and in, in each room, and that's an initial capacity. And certainly, um, you know, there could be like, can we may have moved out more desks? Or can we, you know, maybe what we thought isn't working because it's too, um, you know, we, the capacity is actually lower. And so that's where that asterisk comes in is that if we continue to be in the moderate rate, then we do want to give students more in-person opportunities. But we do also have to mind the six foot distance and the capacity and all those issues. And some of our buildings, you know, like a Lackamas Lake, where we haven't filled that building yet, have greater capacity than other buildings. So how would we as a district sort through that? And, you know, try to ensure that there is some sort of consistency. But we also want to maximize the opportunity for kids and honor to what you heard in the public comments about the concerns of moving from Cohort A Cohort B to full in person. And so that asterisk is on there to really let people know that we would have to work through those details that you're bringing out, Corey.
So I I think you mentioned this in another meeting, but if a staff member or even a building principal or something like that has a a concern about the the square footage we've caught, we've, you know, calculated for their room, there's a process, is there a process they can go through to like, I don't know if this is the right term, but appeal it?
Yeah, there is. In the memo of understanding with with our teachers' union, just around, we established the a baseline for those capacities back in the fall. And, you know, I think an important thing is that in the fall, we weren't serving kids as much as we are now. And so there could be some nuanced learning about that, you know, maybe we can put more kids in the space. Or maybe we have to put less kids in the in the space. And so, yes, there's a process to go through that with the building administrator first and just to make sure we're on the same page with that.
Okay, thank you.
The other part of that transition is if those rates were to bounce around, you know, looking at natural points of of transition time too, you know, like the spring break is is a natural point of transition. And so just being mindful of that as as I come back to you each board meeting to talk about where we're at with rates, where are we at with our plans? We know our baseline is that small group for high, but how might we accelerate that? But also recognize concerns and logistics to do it right.
Jeff, I have a question about the high school. With the rates going down, I forgot what they were today, but or what they're supposed to be tomorrow. If they go down again the following week, at what point do we pull the trigger and say, okay, high school's not small groups, we're gonna put them back in hybrid? Because I know how much planning goes into that, and I feel like they're planning so much right now for small groups. But we can't wait until February 28th to say, oh, wait, the rates are low enough to go to hybrid. So is there a point here in the next week or two that if we get to like a certain number that we can just move that to hybrid instead of the small groups?
Yeah, I think it's a really important point, Tracy, that that planning time is is critical. Haze and Discovery have a little more flexibility about what that looks like, just because of the scope and size of the number of students and staff. Camas High School, I know, and you guys were on the town hall as well, that they've tried to build their small groups so that it could replicate up to a hybrid model with instead of one day a week, two days a week. And so they've been thinking about that. That doesn't minimize the planning or the 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 worry. Just trying to make sure that we do it right. And so I would say, looking at those rates again next week, if they were continuing to have a drop, like, you know, we went from 310 to potentially 260. If we were to go from 260 to 220 or something, then all indications are that we're heading in the right direction. And so we would want to probably ready the group. And then, as you guys know, the 22nd is another board meeting to kind of check in on those rates and make sure, you know, they so I wish I could just like say definitively for everyone, I know that 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 might be helpful. But when you're trying to follow public health guidance and you're trying to monitor the rates, there are a lot of moving parts with this.
Jeff, is there any concern with starting these transitions midweek?
I I think there's always gonna be a concern whenever you start it, Corey. When we originally talked about this proposal and and going on Thursday is because the cohorts are A, B. You know, so it for them, it's it is kind of, you you know, you're just gonna start with B instead of you're gonna start with A. The other piece of that is this February is really awkward to try to with the President's Day weekend. Like, it's really, like, we only have one day with both cohorts. You know, Thursday for Cohort B and then next Tuesday for Cohort A. And so just trying to maximize time for kids if the rates support it is really the decision. And then the other part of that is because K, our elementary schools have had experience with this. As Kathy mentioned in the public comment, she's been doing kindergarten since November, that they're a little further along in that process of transitioning than I I would say a middle school or a a high school is at this point, just cuz they haven't had that long-term experience.
Okay, so I I just hope the conversations are going on because I mean, I just know as a an educator, I mean, there's a difference between, you know, a small group and a hybrid, even just adding an extra day on, an extra hour onto your day. It's not just something that, oh, hey, you know, that doesn't just happen with the flip of a switch, so.
No, it doesn't.
So it makes me curious if there are concerns around seven, eight, having going from small group directly to hybrid the next week. And I'm wondering, because it's such a, what I've heard is it's a change in community. I mean, to to give it a one week, it does that feel, I'm curious if if that's feeling rushed.
I I think it depends on who you ask, Erica. Like, some people are gonna be really ready to bring it in, and other people are gonna feel like it's rushed. When you look at some of the district plans that I had put up before, you know, an evergreen is having orientation kinds of experiences, a couple sessions for sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade, this would give that opportunity for those groups as well. And then, you know, I think that we got to go back to to the, you know, you adopted a plan based on the rates. And and if we're in moderate for consecutive weeks, then, you know, we've talked about trying to prioritize in-person learning experiences when it's safe. And moderate is what the Department of Health is recommending transitioning in. And so, you know, as a board, you guys can decide if you want to go slower or faster with that. I also, my experience with this is it's, there's never a good time, honestly. It's hard. It's really difficult work. And, you know, I'll share some data with you later about our countermeasure strategies and how how staff are feeling about it. But until you get into the building and and are really doing that work, it's 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 anxious, right? It's it's tough, and I don't want to minimize that at all.
So let me kind of like look ahead a little bit. And and I'm curious about that nine to 12 small group. You know, they're planning for that March first. If 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 rates continue to drop, say something crazy, say they went into low. I'm curious if, you know, after March first, you know, the next slide that's not on here right now, would we be pushing the high school to to adopt a quicker, like, like middle school here, a a hybrid plan? Or did they have an extended amount of time to plan for that?
I think that kind of goes back to what Tracy was asking about a decision point in leading up to February or to March first. And so if you're seeing consistent drops in the rates, you know, then I think we need to talk about that next week and and the week after, to to be fair to those teachers in terms of what the expectations are. You know, I, it's it's difficult, right? But this has been for these high school students. Well, it will be one, two weeks less than a full year that they haven't been on campus. And so I I really feel like every day counts. You know, we do, our staff do a great job with that. So if if our rates are going down, then we need to have that conversation and, you know, talk it through a little bit. And so certainly, we've set ourselves up for Monday, the 22nd, when, you know, you as a board are able to 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 weigh in on that. And that's kind of what we've been doing with our plans as we've gone through is each board meeting. Check in, we have these two-week increments of phasing in and and check in to kind of let you know how things are going and if we feel like we need to push the gas or pump the brakes.
I would just pipe in that when we were at Liberty last week, Mr. Mueller and Mr. Berenowski, we're we're really looking at that that potential one week in small groups before the move to hybrid. And we're really just gonna treat that week kind of as an orientation back to the building. And, you know, kind of a a soft landing to come into hybrid. You know, knowing that it's just just a week. So.
Okay, I'm gonna continue then. So this is our countermeasures and throughout this plan, these have been a really critical part, like we can only reopen if we're implementing these countermeasures with fidelity. And so we we started a couple of weeks ago, a process where we're gonna survey our staff every other week and ask them about the implementation, the consistency of the implementation related to these countermeasures. And the goal of that is really to continue to share the structures, processes, the protocols with with all stakeholders. And also to continue to refine our practices and provide ongoing training and to give this outlet to staff to talk about what's happening. And so there's a short 10-minute video that walks staff through the countermeasures. We've done this several times now over the course of the year, either in all-staff meetings, school site staff meetings, or also in our town halls, we've walked stakeholders through these. And these are all on our website too, under the COVID resources. So this is gonna want to play, sorry. So what we asked first is it's really critical that our site understand that each, our staff understand that each site has a coordinator. And that coordinator's responsibility is to make sure that our countermeasures are being implemented with fidelity. And so number one, it's really important that everybody knows who that person is. And so with these surveys, we're putting it out right on there, this is your COVID site coordinator. And so we want to get up to 100% on this. But in our initial round, you know, we were in the 85% area of people who know who their COVID site coordinator is. These are the kinds of questions that we ask staff about. The screening process, the distancing standard, our masking practices, cleaning and disinfection, and our HVAC process. And we break out some of these by students and by staff. And so really trying to understand, is this a staff issue or is this a student issue that we need to zero in on? So this is the data for our staff related to those eight standards. And I know it's kind of hard to see, but screening is the first one for students and staff. And then we get into physical distancing and then masking and then cleaning and disinfection. And then finally, our HVAC procedures. And so the slides here, the the bars are, blue is consistent implementation, school or site-wide, so very confident in the process. And then there's a scale going down to gray, which is that there's inconsistent implementation from that perspective. And then the yellow bar are people that aren't sure about the process. And you can see that the biggest one of uncertainty is our HVAC process, and I'll talk a little more about that. We also broke this data down by, if you were primarily working onsite, how do you feel about this? And if you're primarily working remotely, how do you feel about this? And same scale, same questions. And you can see that our staff that are onsite are are feeling more confident about the processes than our staff that are on or are serving remotely. And obviously, that makes sense because the onsite staff are there and are able to implement the processes, see it happen, be able to respond to it. So I think this is really important data. We also break this data down by site. So each COVID coordinator gets their survey data and then can look at where they stand compared to the district. And then their assignment this last week was to set a goal about one of the standards and what they were doing to try to make more dark green on our bars is really the goal. And we want less uncertainty as staff are working through this. So every two weeks, you'll get, the staff will complete this, and then you'll get a report that looks like this every two weeks as a board to understand if we're making a difference with our staff. The HVAC process is one that I think we still have a lot of uncertainty around because it's kind of an unknown thing, right? Like, it's just something that happens and we, you know, we don't usually give it a lot of thought unless we have smoky days or it's really hot and it's not getting cool air in, or it's cold in our buildings. And now we're paying attention to that. And so we've just put some documents together, they're on the website as well for for our patrons if they want to look at them. Some short videos that explain the process, how we're going above the standards to really make sure our recirculation and filtering are are giving us the cleanest air that we can. And so I just want to highlight that, and that's an area that we're really trying to call out and make sure that if people have questions, that we're answering their questions for them. And so I'm gonna pause, and that's the end of the timeline part and countermeasure part of the presentation. And then I'm gonna invite some other people to share with you. But do you have any other questions about that part of the reopening information tonight?
I I just want to make one more comment, a shout out to Liberty again. And I know in our board workshop, we talked a little bit about how we wanted to tour some more of the schools when we have the opportunity. But I think Corey mentioned this, that even walking through Liberty, I was comfortable before, but walking through, I mean, I saw the cleaning guy like five times and and everybody was doing all of these countermeasures that we've been talking about. So just having the opportunity to walk through there, I think this made me feel even better about it. And so I just applaud all the efforts that we've been putting into making the building safe.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Derek Jaques, and we want to give you an update on Camas Connect Academy. And Derek, I I think you also have Mr. Fox here, Tim, right? And so I'll, do you want me to drive the slides, Derek, just so that we we can keep it going?
That'd be great. Thank you. So I appreciate your time tonight, and I'll I'll do the the majority of the update and Tim will focus on the 912 program. So administratively, I've been serving the 38 group, and there's kind of three grade bands of the CCA, the 35 group, the 68 group, and the 912 group. And so, you know, those are the three different groups, and I'll talk a little bit about why they're different groups. The 35 programming, the 35 was a full remote program for third, fourth, and fifth grade students. And part of the goals of the program was to provide a, an all-year planned remote setting for students. The experience is really a little different than the typical remote experience in that we prioritize live Zooms in the morning. Also, we have a STEM focus in the in the program. PE and music are served by instructors remotely. And also, the the 35 program utilizes the adopted curriculum. So for example, like Bridges Math is the same across our district, and the ELA resources are the same as well. One of the things that I just wanted to point out and to remember is that we started the, we opened up the CCA option for families on August 13th, and I'll cover this a little later as well. And then, and that, at that time, the whole district was planned to do, to start in hybrid. And about eight days later is when our district, the numbers really changed significantly. And the district went into remote start for the whole district. So we can go to the next slide, please. So the current enrollment in the 35 program, there's 74 students, so third grade. We have 22 students in third grade, 24 in fourth, and about 30 students in fifth grade. And amazingly, the enrollment, and you'll see this is true in all of the CCA programs, has fluctuated from 104 students to 68. There's been a waiting list in fourth grade, we have a single teacher in fourth grade, there's been a waiting list all year. And third and fifth grade have swung a lot based on the COVID numbers and the in-person services that are offered by our district. And so we've seen students coming and going as a result of that, of those changes over time. And as I said, the 35 program has five full-time staff members. And then on a very part-time basis, they're served by specialists in PE, music, and STEM. So just a couple of history and considerations, they said on 813 is when we first offered and had town halls for the community about the CCA program. And we had a tremendous amount of of interest at that time, but it was prior to the district announcing that the whole district would start in remote because of the numbers that went significantly up over the summer, near the end of the summer for for COVID, based on the Department of Health. We've had, we initially, as I said, had over 100 families, and then it's fluctuated quite a bit. One thing that's been interesting is I've taken phone calls and I've I've literally talked with hundreds of people about the CCA programs, three through 12, but a lot in the 35 space. And we have, we have had a lot of students that were previously homeschooled or were not, did not enroll in our district to begin with, who have joined the CCA throughout the year. Ready for the next? Ready for the next, oh. A couple of just considerations. And we talk about like the future of this. One of the strong considerations we would have to, you know, make the program even more robust is like an enrollment commitment prior to August. And that would allow us to really set staffing and be able to serve students even better. One of the things that we, we did over the past summer was to look at what types of K2 curriculum that we could find. And we didn't feel there was a strong K2 remote curriculum that wasn't ours. And also a lot of, in talking with our partner districts around the region, we didn't really find any strong K2 programs. But that's something as a result of this pandemic that we certainly should investigate and, you know, education programs in the K2 space are challenging, but it's something that I think some families will, would appreciate if, if our district or other districts around a region had K2 options. Also coordinating specialists with another specific building, that was a real challenge and still is, is just serving students with specialists. We share specialists currently with Lackamas and Woodburne. And as the, those buildings go into hybrid or small group, all those different transitions make the scheduling more challenging. The last two things are big ones. If we had a formalized ID with OSPI, it would significantly help our data and communication. Currently, the families in the CCA are associated with Prune Hill from a communications and data standpoint. So those families receive all the Prune Hill communications in addition to the CCA communications. And that's largely a result of our, the way our data structure is set up. And they're built upon Skyward, which relies on those state authorized entities. The last one is long-term, you know, if we continue to offer remote services, then in-person opportunities and partnerships for those students are really important. And we know that in-person learning is the gold standard for the vast majority of our students. And having them in front of a teacher is, is a really important, the most important component of oftentimes a high quality educational experience. The six eight program is vastly different than what students in six eight receive in our district and the CCA three five program. So the six 12 program in total uses a third-party software called Apex for core subject instruction in math, science, English and social studies. Some electives in high school as well. There are no middle school electives in the Apex software. Our electives in the six eight program are offered through the boundary school and choir and band. And then we offer a star tech, which is similar experience to what the students receive at Skyridge or Liberty. Technology elective where they go through different graphic design and robotics and 3D printing in, in the CCA elective. There are not live Zoom meetings for instruction. So students receive support through appointment-based one-on-one instruction. And this has been really interesting. So the software delivers the core direct instruction and students reach out to staff. And we also have a ton of data that we see on the backend when students are not accessing their education or they're struggling in certain areas. And then we reach out to them for additional support. For many families, it's been really successful. And the nice part about the Apex software, from a intervention standpoint, is the amount of data that we have. We have, we meet every Wednesday as a staff. We talk about every student within the program. And we can, we can do that because of the data that we're able to access from the Apex software. So, you know, big question is like, what's, what are some of the differences in CCA? And one of the big things is independent work is really emphasized in the, in the CCA six eight program. We don't, we, we serve and we support, we wrap around students. But the independent nature of the software is very important. And we work with students and families about keeping a schedule, you know, transitioning from subject to subject each day. The beauty of the software is students can work through a single content area in a day. If they, you know, I'm on fire for math today and they could spend, you know, their morning all on math if they choose. And so those, those are some of the nice parts, but then we also have found that some students who just, for example, love math and they are done with their math class for the week and they're very ahead in math, but their social studies, they're behind, you know, a lesson or two. And so we work with families to help structure the experience a little bit more. In general, there's a, there's a structure to how the system works. The students learn content from software and they get help. And then there's usually a practice assignment that's, that is graded and evaluated by a campus school district teacher. And then there's typically a quiz or some other performance assessment that they can demonstrate their learned knowledge. And then they move on to the next lesson. We have teachers, we've, we've learned a lot in this process and teachers used to offer like a live Zoom every day. And what they found out was the one-on-one time with students was far more valuable. So the majority of our teacher time is spent supporting students in one-on-one meetings throughout the week. Current enrollment in the six eight program, there are 59 students in the six eight program. And enrollment fluctuated between 249. And so like, as I mentioned, on, on August 13th, before we, as a district, went to remote due to the virus conditions, we had 200 students in the CCA six eight program. And that number, when the district, when we went to remote as a system due to the virus conditions, that number plummeted. And then students have slowly come back and we've had students come and go from the program. And as I said, it has worked for many students and some students tried the program and then felt like their neighborhood school, their in-person building experience was a better fit for them. We have two and a half staff members in the CCA six eight program. And plus we have shared accounts, a point to counselor with the nine 12 program. And then I, I do the administrative work for the three five and the six eight program.
This just has the wrong categories, right? I did go back at the slide 56. Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Well, I want to make that clear. People are reading this and watching it because I, I went back to slide 56 and that's a three five. This is.
Six eight, yeah.
Okay.
And then just a couple of considerations. As I said, you know, we, one of the things that would be beneficial is obviously having student commitments prior to August in order to make the, the program make, allow us to be able to serve students from a staffing model better. Identify opportunities to serve students remotely and electives. I think we've done a pretty good job of figuring out electives, but adding to the number and type of electives would be beneficial. And we have some ideas of that based on the, the future of the CCA and the perhaps planned alignment with this nine 12 program. Also, once again, formalizing the ID with OSPI, that has been, that has been a massive difficulty for staff and students because parent square pulls data from Skyward, which utilizes that state ID system. So like our staff members get updates from Odyssey, Skyridge, Liberty and the CCA. So they, they get, you know, a half dozen or more parent square communications a day and our families do as well. So if a student, their boundary school was Skyridge, for example, they'll get CCA and Skyridge updates. And a fix for that will be simply, I'm having an ID through OSPI.
Derek, do you think you'll get that ID by the start of next school year? How long does that take?
Yeah, that, that was the issue is we started the school in July and you usually have to have that application in the end of May. And so OSPI actually had a lot of districts requesting IDs and asked us to not request them last, at the end of last year for this, because of COVID. So yes, I believe that we'll have the ID in place and it won't be an issue. Another component that is just, you know, once COVID, you know, whatever happens, including more in-person opportunities and partnerships with students. We know that the relationship is very important and students have really appreciated the flexibility of the remote learning and the way the software is set up. And, but I consistently hear from my, my seat and the many, many phone calls I've had with parents that those interactions with staff face-to-face or some of those in-person experiences are, are really, you know, critical to the student experience. Of the other consideration that's, you know, could be a benefit of the Apex system is that it does allow for some combined classes potentially across the district where, where traditionally numbers may not be like a full, a full caseload. We found that the Spanish experience students had, you know, with our instructor through Apex that a good, has done a good job thus far preparing students for Spanish and working through the curriculum. And next I'm going to just turn it over. So Tim Fox, around the beginning of September, took over supporting the CCA nine 12 program. And so I'm going to turn the presentation over to him for the next few slides.
Thank you, Derek. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you to our school board for all the, your service to our community and our students and our families. And Mr. Quinn and Mrs. Hennessy for 15 years of service. I don't know if anybody would allow me to stay anywhere for 15 years, but thank you so much for all you all do. You know, it's a pleasure to talk about CCA because it's been quite the adventure. Currently, we're serving 36 students in CCA. We picked up several more at the semester mark. And, you know, there are, there are many of the same, the same considerations and issues that we've had to come across or come across with the nine 12 CCA Derek has already talked about. We offer core classes, most of the same types of core classes that are graduation requirements at any of our other high schools here in Canvas. The only ones that we don't offer right now are CTE courses. And a lot of that has to do with frameworks that are not aligned necessarily with the CCA courses available in Apex. PE is done through CHS's independent PE curriculum. And Val Parbin is the teacher that, that helps us with that process. No, we don't have any live zooms for coursework. Our support teachers provide office hours and individual support to students based on content areas. And we also have a lead teacher in CCA, the high school CCA level, Ryan Layton, who works with students individually. One of the things that we've found through this process is making sure that we work with our students and families on establishing solid routines. They don't have class periods. They don't have zooms that are mandatory, except for, you know, 30 minutes advisory every week, which we'll talk about later. But, you know, that's the, the thing that we stress is making sure that they have routines that are set, that they feel good about what they're working on, because there is quite a bit of work in these courses. So our current staffing, we've got one full-time teacher, that's Ryan Layton, and he is split, half his time is split as an IEP case manager for students within the nine 12 and, excuse me, six through eight CCA. He's also for the nine through 12 level, he is the Apex administrator on the backend of things. So he's making sure that, and he's, he's keeping track of data, making sure students are in the correct classes. And then just making sure that students are staying on track. He meets with students also throughout the week to ensure that they are staying on track and making good progress. So we do have support teachers at all the core, in all of our core classes, like English and social studies. We have a math teacher that provides some support and a science teacher that provides some support as well. And I provided a breakdown there as far as FTE goes. When it comes to elective courses, we reserved a little bit of FTE to pay teachers by the per diem, per diem rate. And so monthly, they submit a time card to indicate how much time they spend. And a lot of that has to do with the deferring levels of engagement that teachers need to have for grading, for support and so on for those electives. So for example, we have music appreciation and art appreciation that don't require as much time as Spanish. So, you know, just due to sheer numbers of students that are enrolled in those classes. We do have a counselor that is a, she's Breanna Richardson. She's point eight at Canvas High School and serves point two FTE for CCA. And she supports students at sixth to eighth grade level and also nine to 12. So for us at the high school level, she leads our character strong advisory curriculum, which is the very same one that we use at Canvas High School. And we do this weekly. And during that time, some of the time is devoted to making sure that students are staying on track with the high school beyond plans. So lastly, I'll talk about some future considerations. This has been a tremendous learning opportunity for us in terms of, you know, creating a school basically from scratch. You know, one of the things that Derek mentioned earlier was, was attaching the six through eight CCA to a building. I think that would be amazing for the high school level as well, as it allows students, one, to access CTE courses, but also feel part of a greater school community and also allow students to access hands-on opportunities as appropriate. One of the things that is also, you know, something that needs to be considered is the robust, the robustness of, of staffing. We've got many staff members at the high school level that are, you know, working at multiple schools. And then the other thing that we've really come across is making sure that our students that are served by IEPs have case managers that are able to stay with them, that have been with them for some time, that know what their educational experience has been like. And also, you know, that have worked with families and also it lasts for easier transitions for students as they move potentially in and out of CCA.
So I want to just take the opportunity also to recognize the CCA staff across the system, across the three, five, six, eight and nine 12. It has been yeoman's work, as Tim said, you know, we, we were, we asked them and hired many of these teachers in late August. And they were, they are, have worked tremendously hard. The three, five staff are some of the best people I've ever worked with and my six, eight staff that I work directly with. It has been a learning curve and they have tackled it and done a phenomenal job to the point of, I, I feel like really making the program work really well for the students that we're serving. And particularly students who traditionally have not found success in our educational system. They've worked directly with those students in, for enormous amounts of time and had them, you know, find success in the CCA program. As I said, it's, you know, the CCA program is not for every student and it certainly is, especially in the six 12 space is much different than a traditional educational experience. But it has served many of our students well during the pandemic. And so I have a few questions that I know I've been asked multiple times by staff members, community members. As a parent in the district, I get them from my neighbors, just like many of you do. So one of the big questions I get very regularly is why are all the remote students not in the CCA? And, you know, the response to that is, is multifaceted. I would say in the six 12 program, because students are significantly, it's a significantly different experience. And we try to educate. I, I've mentioned this earlier, but I have been on the phone for hours and hours explaining the program, providing demonstrations of what it looks like to see if that program is a fit for students. And the second one is the timing of the remote determination because of the COVID levels early in the school year of the whole district starting in remote. The vast majority of our families chose to go with the neighborhood schools that they were familiar with and had great experiences with. And so, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons. I would also say in the three, five program, we've, we've admitted every student we could, based on staffing. The only place we have not admitted as soon as fourth grade, when we've been contractually full for most of the year in fourth grade, in third and fifth grade, we've had students come and some students go as a result, as I said, of the changing conditions. And we are, that, that program has been open to new additions throughout the year. And we have graciously taken everyone who's been willing to join us on the journey. Why are staffing levels so variable? That's another question that I think we received. And, and part of that is because of families choosing to go back to their neighborhood school or coming from the, the in-person experience to the CCA because they perhaps don't want to go into a building in the elementary or have that transitional time, time period. Will the CCA exist beyond 2021? So we've talked internally about this program certainly can serve students. What the iteration looks like, I think, has to be determined over the next few months. But we definitely have learned through COVID. And I say professionally, as an educator, I've learned that many students have done well in a remote settings and may continue to request that. We think a lot of the cases of students who maybe have a medical issue or they have, they prefer this learning style or the flexibility of the style. Those, those factors, all I think will influence the CCA beyond 2021. And then the last question I've got from many different staff members is how did, how do staff join the CCA? At the start of this year, we did an open application process and conducted interviews for staff. Additionally, we staff the program by, by need, by student need, FTE need. So those are four of the, the main questions that I've gotten. And then I wanted to turn it over to the board to see if there are other questions for Tim or myself about the CCA program.
Thank you, Derek and Tim for that. That was a lot of great information. And I know it helped me understand it more. I guess I didn't know there was not live zooms in the six through 12. So that's interesting because I didn't know that part. But, and I do get the question a lot about will CCA exist beyond 2021? And my answer is I hope that it does because it is serving a lot of our students. And so I hope that we're able to continue that into the future. But otherwise, I thought it was great information and I'm glad it's working. um into the future. But otherwise, I thought it was great information and, and I'm glad it's working for some of our students.
Yes, thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing this with, with us. What amazing data. And what an amazing, another opportunity that Kama students have. And that's a question I get too. Uh, is it extending? And I wonder is, has there ever been talk about this being an option for those that seek a summer school or just extra learning in those days that aren't in the hundred and eighty days that we are in school?
Erica, that's a great question. And it's funny because we had a meeting today about summer school and um I spoke for a long time about the, what I perceive are the benefits of Apex. And I know Mrs. Holmes at Hayes has utilized Apex previously for like in a summer school, school experience. And I think the learning that we have done uh throughout this year will really help us to be able to serve students in the capacity of summer school and perhaps extended learning opportunities for students. Um, I would certainly hope um that we will, you know, look into all of the tools and resources available for summer school. Um, I feel like we've learned a lot about Apex and I'm not a hundred percent sure it's the solution. But it certainly is a tool that I believe can be used effectively to support students, you know, to learn outside of the traditional hundred and eighty day classroom experience.
Eric, I'm curious, what do you think uh or Tim about the scalability of this program? I mean, is it? Where does it become based on your view kind of unwieldily or is there such a thing? Was it unwieldly at two?
That's, that's, that's another great question. Um, I think we've, we've learned how we can scale it up and down um based on staffing. It, it is different, I would say, in the three, in particularly the six, eight and the nine, twelve grade mans. The challenge with high school is, is the, the number of courses you need to serve students. So you have nine, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders. And so they potentially could be in a variety of classes. Um, and I think, you know, I'm gonna let Tim answer that part of the question because I think he's sort of worked on that. Uh, the six, eight program, you know, I do feel like um there is a kind of a critical mass you need. And beyond that, I think you could serve students that at any number we wanted to. Um, if it, it's like, it's like traditional school forecasting, you need to know the number ahead of time. If, if it's the day of school starting, that's very challenging because you have to train staff and do all that work. But um I'm gonna let Tim answer the second part or the high school part.
Sure, yeah. And it kind of relates to the uh live zooming as well. We have teachers that are supporting students, you know, from English class, for example, nine through twelve, but then also offering AP classes, offering, you know, creative writing as an elective. So that part is um, is a limiting factor, but you know, hey, if you wanna, if you wanna staff it, we'll get kids in there. It's just um, it's just one of those things that um, it's a puzzle. And you know, making sure, just like, just like Derek mentioned, in, in terms of forecasting at the high school level is, is it is a tremendous challenge in and of itself. Um, but you know, I think there's a tremendous opportunity here. Um, but yes, I think, I think it could be. It's just a matter of, you know, the, the staffing piece as, as we've talked about.
And I, Doug, I want to add one more thing because I think you and I were on the Odyssey Exploration Committee about five years ago and we talked about a playlist and students having the availability of a class playlist. Yeah, we've seen a little bit of that happen this year. And like I said, I'm not, we're not a hundred percent Apex is a tool, but it, it has been good. So a good example is we have a student at Discovery High School. He, he um wanted to take a specialty math class that, that Discovery wasn't able to offer. And so they're using Apex for that exact purpose. Okay, we've, we've had that, that conversations, maybe some of the courses are like a playlist type of an uh opportunity at Discovery.
Yep. Yeah, and with um nine to twelve CCA, we've, we've done some blending as well, you know, where a student wanted to continue on with our technology robotics class at CHS. We've had a student who wanted to continue on with advanced fitness. And so we've been able to stay flexible in, in that regard of those students.
Sounds creative and unique and terrifying in, in a way. So, thank you. I appreciate you guys working to bring those students into a, you know, a little stronger position. It sounds like it's uh there's some potential there for future use. Thank you.
Well, I just have to say really quick, as somebody who has a, a child in uh in CCA right now, my daughter's in third grade there. Um, what you and your staff have done um in, you know, two short weeks of time, some maybe even less than that when the school year started um has just been a, amazing. My daughter is, she's thriving in there. She's so, she's making friends with people on screens that she's never met in person, but yet they're, you know, chatting during lunch a couple days a week. The, the staff has done a fantastic job of, of building community in there. It, we, you know, we obviously had some, some reservations about that, you know, connectivity and community. But I mean, right away from the beginning of the year, designing a, designing a mascot, I think what you're the Owls, right? Isn't that what it is? So I mean, it's just fantastic. I just, I, I, I can't tell you how happy I am with the program. Um, it, it just, my daughter's thriving in there. And like I said, it's not for every kid, but um, but the ones that are in there, I just, just I don't know what I'm going with this. Just thank you. And then my other question is, um, are there natural entry and exit points with the program in terms of, I mean, I don't know, it sounds like fourth grade doesn't have capacity or anything like that, but I mean, um, you just, is it just kind of on a case-by-case basis or do you try and do grading periods with entry and exit?
Yeah, that's a great question, Corey. Um, we've tried to ask families to um look at their family need. And because entry, we know entry and transitions are difficult for students typically. Um, and so we, we ask for them to look at grading periods, trimester or semester. And some families were in situations where, for example, I had a family who had a, a relative come to live with them who had a medical condition that made them not want to go in person any longer and they needed to move right away. So we accommodated that family. So we do ask for um transitions and we think they're best for students at grading periods. But we'll, we have taken students as, you know, as needed on a case-by-case basis as well.
And it's been that same way at the high school level. You know, we've, we've asked for them to, to wait at, until the semester mark only because, you know, we're talking about credits, we're talking about, you know, challenging transitions. But we have, as, as Derek mentioned, have had, uh, done the same thing.
Does anybody else have any other questions? All right. Thank you guys very much for being here and giving that update. And we will reach out if we need more information, but thanks for, um, thanks for this today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda, we're going to move to the elementary update and I believe um Doug Hood will be giving us that update.
I will, absolutely. Uh, thank you, Jeff, for, for getting that slide up. So um, just kind of a, a reminder of where we're at. Um, kindergarten, first, second, and third grade are onsite right now with cohort A or B. And then we also have students that are fully remote. Um, so um, what, what we've talked about a little bit already tonight around what Jeff shared in some of the slides right now currently where the we go from eight to one thirty. Um, our specialists, meaning music P and library are serving through Zoom currently in this model, this small group, group model. And then I just wanted to give some figures and, and these are in Jeff's numbers as well when he was comparing us to other districts around us and also the state. Um, currently, uh, a little over fourteen hundred of our students are choosing the onsite uh A, B cohort model and approximately three hundred and sixty-eight are choosing fully remote. So depending on the Clark County Health Department number, which Jeff has already talked about a little bit, um, we could begin hybrid on Thursday um for that cohort B. And that would mean they would go from eight to two thirty PM for uh kindergarten through third grade cohort B. Jeff, you want to get to the next slide, talk about fourth and fifth? Thank you. So obviously I had not talked to Jeff uh very much about numbers, which, which is, uh, you know, he's busy. Uh, so I don't want to bug him, but uh two scenarios that could play out. And if the two hundred and sixty-two actually comes in tomorrow from the Clark County Health Department, um, then, then we would go into hybrid, obviously. Um, and for the hybrid schedule for our fourth and fifth grade, they would actually go in on the sixteenth, which is, which is a Tuesday. And I think Jeff had already talked a little bit about kind of how February has got some interesting days where we have to kind of work around. One of the big differences to if we go to hybrid kindergarten through fifth grade is specialists would now serve students onsite and in person. Um, and again, the schedule for students is eight to two thirty PM. Any questions around where we're at with elementary?
I think
All good.
Important to board, I just know that um you guys are getting a lot of feedback about this timeline and it's one thing when you adopt it in December, it's another thing when our rates are moderate two weeks in a row and it's real. And you know, I, again, I don't want to minimize it at all for anybody. This is, this is a big transition and we're glad that those rates are down. Uh, but adding an hour um and specialists onsite is something that um, you know, I know that you've heard about and it's things that Doug has truly tried to explore um and, and support. So um, just want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with that, um, that plan moving forward. Because the, the team really needs direction on that. If it's, if it's changing, you've already given us that direction, but I want to make sure um, if there is anything that's changing on that.
Well, I think Corey had also talked about it earlier that um you can't just switch on a dime like this and, and principals and their teams have just been working um just unbelievable hours and, and time put into schedule building. Um, just to, just to create for somebody who doesn't know and isn't part of the system, which is totally fine. Just adding an hour seems very easy to do, but as Corey alluded to, that, that's really difficult and it actually creates a whole new schedule. And so um principals and their teams have been creating the, the what-if scenarios and what-if schedules. So um uh, kudos to, to them at the, at the buildings to, they're just, you know, again, doing amazing work.
And, and the other discussion point that you guys brought up is that if we stay in moderate, like what does that look like when we're adding days? And so we will come back to you on the twenty-second um with plans related to that again to check in with you and, and do we throttle up or throttle back based on what's happening here? Um, so I just, it's so, there's so much information. I don't want to like rush something past you, but I also don't want to wallow in it over and over again when you've already made a difficult decision around some of these things too. So.
So our next board meeting on the twenty-second is when we'll be deciding about more in-person for K through five if we're still in that moderate level.
We would be talking about that and we'd also be talking about the high school group. If you guys are seeing trends that you feel like you want us to prepare for hybrid versus small groups, that would be a check-in point as well.
Right.
Okay. And that's a good transition to Dr. Williams. Um, Doug, how did you manage like four minutes of presentation time? And that, that, that was pretty good.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, yeah, next slide. So our first um our first week back in secondary um was exciting. Uh, I got actually on there, um, we don't have, it's like thirty seconds of, of footage of Chrissy Woodruff walking um sixth graders down the hall, right? So you see the stanchions down there, you see the sanitizer, those of you who were able to do the board visit. Um, and literally just all the precautions that um our staff have taken to ensure these students um just really um comply in terms of just our safety measures. It's just been incredible to watch. Um, and then they got some pictures of the renegades as well as the skyhawks and class social distancing. You'll see on some of the screens and pictures, you might see zoomers. Um, and in other cases, you'll see seating charts because we have to track exactly where students are sitting, as you know, for contact tracing purposes and those kinds of things. And so it was a great day. Um, it was wonderful to see um students in each of the classes. I got to speak with teachers and students about just how they felt and they were pretty excited about it. Um, and nervous, some, you know, like, like, like you are hearing there are staff members um who, you know, want to make sure that we are taking all the precautions necessary. And um and, and as Jeff, Jeff's data showed earlier, um, staff who are in the building tend to be a little bit more calm once they actually can, can see the, the measures that we are taking. So this is a quote from a sixth grader. Um, the mom wrote Penny um at Odyssey and she said, uh, he got in the car and said, mama almost cried for the first five minutes. And just the um, the overwhelm that students felt being able to see their peers in person again, even if it was six feet with mask on, learning how to read body language in a different way. Um, you know, seeing eyes light up and um uh just, just spirits lifted um with them being present was pretty powerful. And you can see um some of the, the people zooming in there in that particular um picture. So next slide. Um, so here we are by the numbers. So, so you see we have five hundred and fifty-nine total sixth graders, four hundred and thirty um in person. And we have um a hundred and twenty-nine fully remote. So then I know last slide is um just about the, the timeline, which is kind of the big topic tonight. You can tell that, you know, there's a little bit of angst around um transitioning, like those numbers are coming down and, and seem to be doing so quickly. So what does that mean and how will that look? And so our middle school um team has asked to start on February twenty-second for small groups. Um, and to continue with the small groups for our um nine through twelve on March first. Um, because as each of you have already acknowledged tonight that uh there's a lot that goes into scheduling students and um just, just doing the work of getting buildings ready and the time needed to transition. So thank you for um those considerations. And our next slide is a little bit of preview. And in, in our next board meeting, we'll take a little bit more time to give you some progress uh around Fs, but here's our preliminary data like fresh, fresh from like Friday and Saturday. Shannon generally working literally over a week and pulling um uh some of our initial reports. And you can see that the numbers of students receiving Ds or Fs has actually decreased um once it came to semester. So teachers and um students have done a lot of work to reduce that. Uh, yet we still have a lot of work um to do. So we'll talk about that a little bit more in our next board, uh, next meeting. Any questions?
Dr. Williams, I just have one question. So if um, uh, if a staff member has some sort of a concern about a mitigation strategy or a safety measure, do they just bring that to their COVID coordinator? Is that kind of the plan, their building's COVID coordinator? Okay.
That's the first step. And the COVID captains have been pretty busy trying to keep people informed and um, I'm, I'm just seeing lots of questions and um updates um that staff are exchanging with COVID captains. And so the, the communication's flowing.
Corey, we also have a um, an anonymous reporting structure that we've shared with staff. And then in those, every other weekly survey, there's an open-ended comment or question uh box as well. And compiled by school site too. So if a staff member, you know, some of the concerns have been like, I don't, I don't feel comfortable talking to my colleague about this. Or, and we need to make sure that the culture is that we do feel comfortable because people's masks start to slip sometimes. I mean, it, it happens. And so it, you know, hopefully we feel like it's not a big deal and we just say, hey, your mask slipped. Um, but we also want to create places where we just want to get better and do this with fidelity. Right? So where the information comes from or we just need it and we need to respond to it. And so the best thing would be to share with your COVID coordinator because they can take care of it immediately. But if they're not feeling comfortable with that for whatever reason, then we can circle bound back in other channels. Uh, the other piece that's going to be important is that students are coming back is checking in with them too. Right? And like in making sure that they are feeling comfortable and if they have ideas around how we can do things better, um that their voices are heard as well.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Williams, for that update you gave us. And we'll look forward to hearing from you next board meeting um about those um the Ds and Fs and the other things. So thank you for that. Um, so then I guess if we have no other questions, we'll move on to um the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Tracy. Um, I'll try to be pretty brief um on this. Looks like we maybe have inclement weather again. And last time I talked about it in the board meeting, it didn't happen. So I'm going to talk about it again today, but um we're sending out snow patrol, at least based on the So I'm going to talk about it again today, but, um, we're sending out snow patrol, at least based on the results or the forecast right now, Thursday morning and Tuesday morning, um, looks like temperatures are going to get kind of cold. And, and whether we have precipitation or not, um, we'll see, but, um, just, you know, that's, that's part of the process. Um, legislative update and some levy information. So on the legislative front, um, there's a really important bill that has a hearing tomorrow. I'll be testifying for it. Um, House Bill 1476, I sent you guys some information last week about this and, um, again, this today. Um, basically it's providing funding for districts that have lost enrollment. Um, and it, it tries to limit the, uh, the funding to, um, decrease in the prior year and combine with federal funding and really try to balance out. Um, and that's why it's called the Funding Stabilization Bill. And so, um, the, the metrics are defined in the bill for how much money districts would get and why. Um, and really the big thing for us is, as we've talked about before, is that the federal funding, um, as great and welcome as that is, in the first round, we got one-fifth per student, um, as Vancouver and Evergreen. And the second round, we're projecting one-tenth as much. And, um, our costs are per student very similar. And so, um, you know, we're hoping that the state will balance that out a little bit and, um, make sure that, um, there's, there's some, um, recognition that we have the same costs associated with this as other districts. And so really encourage you to reach out. Um, I can give you my planned testimony. I'll email it to you tonight, um, for that session tomorrow. Um, and that's the House Appropriations Committee hearing tomorrow. Uh, levy information ballots are due tomorrow, right? It's a big deal in the community. And the certification of the levy actually takes place on February 19th, after they go through the whole process, counting all the ballots, et cetera. Um, you know, a- as I've talked before, these are two replacement levies and they're just so critical to what we do, our programming. Um, you know, for over 40 years, we've had these levies in place in some form and they've really become a part of who we are and, and how we serve, um, the community. Um, the rates, uh, you guys have adopted these rates that are, um, really, um, good comparatively to what we've asked from our voters, um, in the past and very consistent, um, yet still allow us to, um, maintain the programming that, uh, we've come to expect. And hopefully we can deliver post-pandemic, you know, the extracurriculars and things that have really become a part of who we are in Canvas. Um, this is just another look at that rate. And historically, when you look at 2013, you know, our local tax rates were above $8 per assessed value. And we're talking about a proposal that's $4.77. And so, um, I, I commend you as a board to recog- you recognize the challenges that our community is facing. And you also recognize that this is the lifeblood of who we are as a district. And, you know, I've met with people that are unhappy. That's, that's basically been my job this year is to meet with people who are unhappy. And I wish I could deliver for all of them all the time. And, um, certainly we hear heartfelt public comments each meeting that I, I wish I could deliver. And it's not that we're not listening. Um, that's clear, that's, that's not the case. It's that we can't deliver on everything that everybody wants. And that, you know, it's, it's not, it sucks, honestly. You know, I don't like that. And that's not why we do our, um, why we got into this, um, this business of serving through education. Um, but I've also met with people that are saying that they are voting no for the levy because of our timelines related to reopening schools. And when you look at what we've done, um, and compare it to the other state districts in our state, um, where we've tried to get students in, um, how amazing our staff have been remotely and now in person. Um, you know, it's really unfortunate to me that they would feel like voting no on a levy is going to change what we're doing with reopening plans. You guys have been very consistent throughout this, that you're following public health guidance. Um, and you're trying to make these difficult decisions with everyone's, um, best interest at heart. Um, and, uh, voting no on this levy because you don't like a pandemic response from our board or myself is really, um, it's, it's not going to change the result of what we're trying to do with the pandemic response. And, and if anything, it jeopardizes all the programs that we want our students to have in the future. And so, um, you know, we're trying to provide as much information and as accurate information as possible. So I'd really encourage people, if they still have their ballots and they're still wondering, to go to our site and, and get that information and make an informed decision. And certainly respect everybody's right to vote how they want to vote and why they want to vote that. Um, and so, but this is a really, really, tomorrow is a really important day for our community. And that's all I have tonight.
Wow, thanks, Jeff. That was a quick superintendent's report. Thank you. And yes, everybody turn your ballots in who have not done so. You can, there's lots of drop boxes in the area. So, um, whatever you vote, just get them turned in because it's important. Okay, our last item on the agenda is number, um, 11, quality facilities and resources. We're being asked to approve the campus high school athletic field's final acceptance. And I'll just let you know today that when Doug and I met, um, um, at our capital projects meeting, um, Chuck just commented on Goodfellow Brothers, who was a general contractor out there. And he said that they did a great job. I think it was his first, um, experience working with them. And so he was very happy with the work, um, that they did out there. And, um, so just, if, um, taking the final acceptance tonight will just allow the final paperwork to be submitted and the retainers to be released, um, to the contest.
Yes, I'd, I'd be, and I'd be happy based on our review today to make a motion to accept the project as complete and finally accept it.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Connie. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll do a roll call vote for us. Erica.
Hi.
Connie.
Hi.
Doug.
Hi.
Corey.
Hi.
And I also vote aye, so that passes unanimously. That brings us to the end of our regular, regular scheduled, um, meeting tonight. We are now going to go into an executive discussion, executive session, discuss personnel. I think it's probably about 20 minutes and no action is being taken, if I'm correct on that, Jeff.
You are correct, Tracy.
Okay, and so we will leave this and go back to our other link to get into the executive session. Um, so, thank you everyone for joining us tonight. We're adjourned.